You know, this story coming out of Los Angeles that is kind of viral right now, you know, it's a symptom of an ongoing problem, especially in the state of California. Now, I remember about, I guess about 12 years ago or so, me and my wife had a conversation and I remember she told me a long time ago that, she said, listen, she said Mexicans, she said, I can't speak on other groups in the Hispanic world, say, but Mexicans can be more racist than white people. And when she told me that, I'm like, really? I'd say, how is that? Because our history with white folks and what they done to us? And I always said, listen, I know what I'm telling you. He said Mexicans can be more racist than white people. She said they do everything on colorism. They uplift the, the white ones, like the blonde haired, blue eyed ones in Mexico. The Afro Mexicans are discriminated against. They wouldn't even count it, you know, as part of even the, the population to 2015. Uh, the Ozakans, like the indigenous people, they treat them bad as well because they're real dark skinned. And some of them who act a fool here in America was discriminated too. But when they come over here to America, now they're lighter skinned and now they want to participate in what they always wanted to participate in, in their homeland. You see, all this, you know, unchecked immigration. Notice that they're letting a lot of people come in with anti-black racism. Because they want them to be the new, you know, white supremacist replacements who will keep their ideals when they are in a minority. So some people may say, well, why don't they just import Europeans? Well, have you really talked to Europeans? Have you really talked to them? I have. I've talked to quite a few of them. When in my travels. And Europeans do not want to come to the United States. They'll visit, but they don't want to live here. They think it's crazy. We don't have uh, universal healthcare. Um, they think it's crazy about the guns thing in America. They think that's crazy. Uh, they say it scares a lot of them. Um, they said it's, it's too expensive here. It's just a lot of issues here, you know, it's, they say that the ones that have visited, they say the race thing is way too, too much, it's too polarizing, too much in your face. Not to say it doesn't, doesn't happen in European countries, but you know, it's a lot of it is, you know, covert, not, it's not really up in your face like it is in America. According to what, you know, quite a few Europeans, you know, have told me, I remember that I spoke to a, um, a white guy from the UK and a Somali sister. And they were just so floored, we was in a dentist office, actually in Istanbul, they were floored that we would even allow them not to give us universal healthcare. So with all the anti-black racism that goes on in Latin America, we know it's all through there. You know, any person who is an Afro, you know, Mexican, you know, they would, you know, I've seen it on TikTok a lot that they all, you ain't no real Mexican, you're not Hispanic, you're not this because, because they're black, right? So this is, this is what goes on in their own homeland. Now they come over here, right? And in California, because of the policies of the Democrat Party, once again, the Democrat Party have an unchecked immigration, they have flooded the zone in California. Especially in Southern California. And now since they have their numbers up, we get all kinds of reports about a lot of vile anti-black racism that happens in California. They have their gangs running around tagging NK, which is N-word killer. Now I'm mad, let me, let me say this. And this is, this is some of the problem I have with my people in California. If there was a white gang, a white gangs running around California tagging N-word killer on there, tagging NK, that's what it means. Y'all would have mobilized every black person in America to fight against that. Any kind of racism that's done by white people, y'all would have made it a global stance. But one thing I have noticed with the black community, and I'm trying to understand why, is that when this racism and discrimination comes from Hispanics, y'all don't have that same response. Why? Cause how I feel, if it's anti-black racism, we need to challenge that head on. We can't let that go. But see, black people have played this game too long. And you have said this black and brown, black and brown, black and brown. When Felix Tiarina said a long time ago with Lulac, he said, we do not want to unify with them, their problems are their problems. He said that a long time ago. They also fought to be called white. That's the truth. They fought for that because they was going to give that particular group a, their own racial category as Mexican. And they fought against that to be white. They said, no, we are white people. That's who they, so that, that's what the foundation of what, how they thought already. So when you talk about this black and brown, there's no black and brown anything. They're on paper called white. Now some could say, I'm not identifying, there's no freaking white, I'm not white. Because they can put Native American, they can put indigenous, they can put whatever they want to put on the census. We live in a time period where you can identify with genders that you're not. You know, people identify with different races they're not. I mean, we live in that era, if you want to say you identify as a horse, you can say you're a horse. So there's no excuse that, oh, I have to put white on there. No, 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 no. You don't have to. So I've been seeing for, for a while, this trend that when they get their numbers up, now all of a sudden they start attacking black people. They don't attack the people that took their homeland from them. Um, they don't attack the people that got their country in a position that it's in. You know, a cartel infested, um, entity where people are getting their heads chopped off and bodies chopped up and all kinds of things like that. You know, bodies being hung from freeways and all of that. Listen, I've seen all the stuff the cartel do in, in their country. And they don't like to talk about any of that, you know, whatsoever. And it's not the people's fault what's happening, but hey, we need to talk about the criminality that's happening, right? So you come over here to Los Angeles, you get a better opportunity and we, and black people have fought, you know, for, you know, everybody, right? Even the immigration, it goes back to Jesse Jackson back in the eighties. They fought on the border to get people here because the white people, they was gonna do, they was gonna just throw everybody out, right? This was before the amnesty thing. They was gonna throw everybody out and there's Jesse Jackson and the Rainbow Push Coalition. They fought and they fought and they say, hey, we gotta stand up. These are marginalized people, you know, this isn't right. This has always been the mantra for us when it's Asian people, we fought for them historically. We say, hey, it's not right for them being in internment camps. You know, we shouldn't treat the Asian people this way. You know, if it's Arab people after nine 11, black people say, hey, you shouldn't be treating, you know, Arab people this way. After nine 11, they had nothing to do with it. You know, that's Osama bin Laden and his crap. You know, we always try to stand up for marginalized people because we know how it feels. Now, of course, not all people of all groups feel this way or act that way. They, they, they don't. So we have some individual people who, who feel this, even what happened in LA is disgusting. Um, they made plenty TikTok videos. I've seen it. They had their protests and for them to be removed and shout out to them and, and I definitely give kudos to them for doing the right thing. Um, but politically, I'm just saying, we talking about politics here, politics, politics. What I'm seeing in California, what I've heard a lot of, you know, people talk, you know, YouTubers or stuff like that who live actually in LA. You know, the dynamic isn't really good whatsoever. So now case in point, you go to this story here, right? With, uh, coming out of California with a council, three council members, um, Nury Martinez, Gil Sadeo and Kevin DeLeon and this, uh, was it Los Angeles Federation President Ron Herrera. Now there are some videos here, some sounds that we need to listen to. Um, that was exposed. So this happened back in October 2021. Um, someone leaked this on Reddit and they, um, exposed it. I don't know who the whistleblower was. They didn't come out and say, you know, anything, um, about what happened. But we'll go ahead and let these play and then just ask some simple questions because I don't know what anybody did, but this, this isn't right. So on this first one here, the recording we're gonna listen to is says, um, it's the council president Nury Martinez, um, of Los Angeles talking about the district attorney George Gascon. So let's play this quick clip.
All the, you know, folks like was asking, he did call me, he wants to have breakfast with me.
What is that you saw?
I haven't, I just said, hey, we need to talk.
Gilson put him from the
Alright, don't worry, I got you. Um, uh, so you'll start seeing him line up.
So as you heard, she says that he's, you know, he's a F that guy, he's with the blacks. Now on the next one, which, which a lot of people was talking about was this particular, uh, clip here.
Whatever the kid's name is online. It's like the oddest theme, it's like black and brown on this floor. And then there's this white guy with the little black kid who's misbehaved. Este niño has no, he's, they're not doing, yeah, no, they're not doing, the kid bouncing off the F and walls on the floor. Practically tipping it over. There's nothing you can do to control him. And I'm just like, oh my God.
Okay, so as you, you know, she talked, called the little, the little black, uh, child, a, uh, looks like a little monkey about the council member Mike Bonden that you saw earlier. Um, on this next one here, um, let's, let's roll this one here.
They raised him like a little white kid, which I was like, this could need a beat down. Like, let me, let me take him around the corner and then I'll bring him back.
Yeah.
So anyways, getting back to the district.
So, so this, this Nury, uh, Martinez, she says she wanted to take the little black child and beat him. Um, that's interesting. She wants to beat a black child. Um, now here they talking about, um, more peo- more people here, want you to hear this?
Yeah, that's called K-Town.
Yes, I see a lot of little short, dark people.
Yeah, Puerto Rican, Puerto Rican Koreans. Not even like Kevin, little ones.
I don't know where these people are from. I was like, I don't know what minutes they came, how they got here, but.
And they weren't you.
So one
That feels.
I get what we have to do, right? This massage to create districts that benefit you all and the future.
Yep.
But we gotta figure out Mark C too. You know, that benefits you three.
Is if, if the African-American look at this, now that the, my or man that he suspended, I don't know what's gonna happen. I think if he should be, but anyhow, if he goes away.
You mean, you mean resign, not suspend it?
No, here
You're right. I see. Yeah, there is, there is a difference. If he resigns, hold on, if he resigns and the African-Americans look at this as a hostile takeover because he's gone, they'll, we all have to figure that shit out because politically they're gonna come after.
Yeah, but can I say something right now? And this is what I call the, the, um, este como se llama this guy? Este, that, that movie, uh, the Wizard of Oz effect. And what I mean by the Wizard of Oz effect is when you're at the side of the curtain, it's like this big voice. It sounds big. It sounds like it's down sometimes. And then when you actually pull the curtain, is that you see the Little Wizard of Oz effect. You know what?
I've never watched the movie.
It's the same thing.
It's real simple. You got a hundred people, right? Fifty-two of them are made time. I feel pretty good about it. I feel pretty good about my chances of beating your ass.
Twenty-five are, are black. Twenty-five blacks are shouting. But they, they shout like they were two hundred and fifty. When there's a hundred of us, they're like, it sounds like ten of us.
So that part, that recording was very interesting because they're sitting up here trying to undermine black people. Politically, you see what they doing? Trying to figure out ways to get black people out of the city council and try to undermine, uh, black people in their districts. Did you see that? You know what I'm saying? They, they are colluding against black people in Los Angeles. So what I've been paying attention to, um, in California and also I've been getting reports out of San Antonio, Texas as well. Brothers and sisters have been saying that they have been dealing with some racism as well. I've been hearing, uh, reports out of Chicago. Um, that they're dealing with the racism as well. Um, black people, let, let me, let me tell you something. Let me tell you something, let me tell you something. If y'all don't clamp down on them doing this, it's gonna get out of hand. Once again, it's not right that if a white person be racist towards you, you're ready, you're ready to, to galvanize the whole country. But when they do it, you, 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 you're suffering in silence, scared to say something, talking about black and brown and, and all of that. I'm like, what? Like, what, what are you, what are you talking about? You understand what I'm saying? Like there's, there's no black and brown coalition. There's none. There is none. Now there's some people of all groups that can be good, cool with us, can, can actually be a true ally, individuals of other groups. Not the whole. Individuals. Because the biggest problem with black folk, you have set up here and, and, and want to say the whole of a group is cool with you when it's only individuals that's cool with you. These people sitting up here colluding to harm black people. But they also scared that black people is gonna respond too. They say, so we gotta figure out a way to do this where black people don't respond. You understand what I'm saying? They are practicing a hostile takeover of anything that black people have fought for. Black people fought to give opportunity to other people and they come in and try to have a hostile takeover mentality and throw pe- black people out of the way. And what makes me sick about California, because I've seen it too many times. Your black politicians are so scared of them. And also I've seen other black folks scared of them. We gotta have unity. We gotta have black and brown. We don't have unity in our own black community. What are you talking about? We don't have unity in our own community. Why don't we get unity in the black community first? You can't unify with somebody else outside. You know what I'm saying? You can't do that. These people as a collective do not want any kind of coalition with black folk. At this stage in the game, stop saying it. Stop. Now, what could be some solutions? Cause we saw that in the clip that the one guy had resigned, but the mother three haven't. So, so what, what could black folks do to start nipping this in the bud? What could we do? Black people's greatest power in America is our, is, is actually collective economics, not individual economics collective. We are the biggest consumer in America. No other group consumes what we consume. The first step to, to reining that in is to say, okay, since, since you want to practice anti-black racism. Okay, no problem. Well, since, since, since you got your little gangs running around tagging N-word killer and all this other stuff, because you can get your own people in line, okay? Well, this, this, this is what we gonna do. And black folks, if, if you have some, some, some courage to do it and stick to it, the first thing you do is immediately remove your money. Don't go in their restaurants. Don't go with anything that they own. Let's call it what it is. You live in the United States. The ones who own everything for the most part is, is white folk. You don't have to go to their restaurants. You don't have to go to anything that they own and say, I'm not going to your stuff because you got three city council members that's sitting up there. Y'all need to get them out the paint. And also this anti-black racism that's happening, we gotta put that, nip that in the bud. Trust me, their community isn't solidified financially enough to take a boycott. Matter of fact, even the white supremacists don't want black people boycotting and they got the money and they don't want black people doing that. That's the first thing that black people need to do in LA and other places immediately. If you're dealing with a lot of anti-black racism from that particular community. Number two, expose every instance of anti-black racism coming from that community. Once again, it's not fair that we call out Karen, but won't call them out when they doing it. It's not fair and it's not right. Every time they do something, film that junk, call it out. Do you know in California, black folks have filed many workplace discrimination suits with EEOC? And the perpetrators have been Latinos. Not white people, Latinos, Latino offenders lead into discrimination. Not white people in California against blacks. That gotta be nipped in the bud, folks. So economic, you know, removal of money, bring economic pain. Two, expose anti-black racism every time they, they do it. Three, learn, learn the words they say. Learn them all. You know, you, you know, you're learning this situation about the monkey situation. You know, they, they saying, you know, of course, many y'all know the mayate word is like the N-word and, and all, learn the words they saying. Okay, you got Google Translate. You could type what they say. Say, what is they saying? Learn what they're saying about you. Learn. And expose. Number three, if they really play, they keep really poking the bear, oh, you know what we can do too? Okay, well, since y'all want to be anti-black racists, fine, no problem. Well, you know what? We still got political, we still got political swing in this country when we want to. We're the support candidates who are against immigration, illegal immigration, I'm gonna say, not legal, illegal immigration. We'll prop that up. Let's call that what it is. When they getting these jobs, they're trying to get black men out of the jobs. I've seen it. Many black men have even, when I made that statement, many black men have said, oh yeah, I've seen that too. They'll try to get a black man fired, but they don't try to get a white man fired. And then what they do is they go to the boss and they do whatever they do and they bring in their cousins and their brothers and everything like that. Or there's one story I read out of California where they had supervisors on, in a warehouse, right? There's one brother and, and sisters in them sued. They'll give black people the, the worst work. They'll, they'll be calling the monkey, the N-word and everything else all in front of them, like it's a nineteen freaking forties where white people doing it. You understand? Black folks gotta nip that mess in the bud now. If you look at the numbers, it wasn't even hardly many of them here back in the nineteen seventies. Because of the, because of the policies of the Democrat Party flooding the zone, now we have a problem. And this is why this is, and, and Representative Steve King said, oh, so, so years ago that black people, he's a Republican, he said, black people's problem is not gonna be black and white. It will be black and Hispanic. He said it. And I said, why is this man saying this? He said this years ago. And now we starting to see why, because you know what? They already knew, we already got some new white supremacists here that's been, it's been purposely imported. Once again, I'm not saying all of that way. I'm not saying that. But you have, uh, quite a few that are. All these black people can't, not lying. Even, even people who have a Hispanic parent and a, and a black parent, they're still discriminated against. They got stories, plenty of stories. So it's time for black people to start calling this mess out. Stop saying black and brown coalition. There's no coalition. It never was a coalition. As black folks doing what black folks do, hoping for a, a non-black friend that you never got. Nobody wants to link up with black people. Nobody want a coalition with black people. Only thing people want from black people is to use, abuse and steal from us. That's it. They don't want no coalition with black folk. Nobody do. The thing is, and what I'm liking is we starting to realize that for a change. When it comes to the area of politics, a coalition is an agreement, is a sit-down agreement. There was no sit-down agreement between both parties. You have individuals say, man, if we get together, man, we can, we can get rid of this, this, you know, racism and get, get them out the paint. Well, that's, that, that, that would actually make more sense. I mean, realistically, that would make more sense that black people and Hispanic people would get together, right? Two marginalized groups. But the problem is, in, in the Hispanic community, because you practice a lot of anti-black racism in your homeland, you bring that over here and then now you, now you got people looking at us, would mess up the individuals that want to do it. So you, you, it was no coalition. We have fought, we have made sure to, to, to stick our neck out for everybody. So if anybody on this black and brown coalition as a politician, I don't want to hear that. I don't want to hear it because you, you gotta show, matter of fact, that their community gotta show black people something at this point. In California, they're always using that term La Raza, 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 La Raza, means the race. If you hear them using that term La Raza, you already, to me, I'm like, okay, you, you racist. That is a point blank. We don't walk around saying the race, the race, the race all the time. That other attitude they have, Mejorando La Raza, which means better the race. Better the race. I, I remember I talked to my wife about that. I said, I said, you know about that term Mejorando La Raza? The first time I heard it. He said, ah, yeah, I know what that means. He says, what you mean like better in the race? Ah, yeah, I say, yeah, I say in California, they walk around, they're saying Mejorando La Raza and, and I say, and she, first thing she said, better the race with what? And better the race with who? He said, I know she, I know they ain't talking about, uh, 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 them folks. I'm like, yeah, sometime they are. I said, you know, you know, you know, I say, you know, good and well, I say, your community, I told them. You know good and well that a white man could come home, but not a black man in a lot of cases. I say, oh, so she say, oh, that's where that come from? Say, well, that's not better in the race? Not at all. It's a better race or what? Say, and I, I really want to say everything she said, but that probably get me in trouble on YouTube. But you know, unfortunately, we have that same thing, even unfortunately in the diaspora where, you know, it's okay to bring a white man home, but not a black American man. So that's neither here nor there. But she even thought that stuff was stupid. She said, that's so stupid. I'll say, yeah, I know what I say, but that's, that's what brothers and sisters are dealing with in, in, in California. And she said, that's so freaking embarrassing. That was, that was she said, you know, and she don't even want to go to Mexico. Cause she said, why would I want to go down there? I already know how it get down. You know, she said, I don't even want to bring my kids down there. Say, them freaking cartel kidnapped your kid and, and the police work with them and you say, it's, it's horrible. Say, you say, people gonna see, because she was talking about all them Americans that have been flooding down to Mexico as of recent. And I say, well, I thought the cartel would be like taxing people. Say, well, they will say, they gonna let them get settled real good and they gonna start taxing all them Americans that's down there. You say, they gonna tax them all. And well, how they do this? Say, well, you, we need to, you need to pay for protection. You know, so if you don't pay for protection, you gotta close your business. That's what they do. But see, they don't, they don't want to talk about what going on in their homeland. They don't want to talk about that. Keep that quiet. Now, that is a major threat to the United States. Right there. That's could spill over and right in the United States at any given time. But black folks, you better nip that in the bud. And the first thing you need to do is stop saying black and brown coalition. There's no coalition, none. Once again, there may be individuals that may be great, that may dine with us and, and, and hey, like I said, you're allied with me, I'm allied with you. But as a collective, no, no, that black and brown gotta get out of our lexicon at this point. Any politician say that, say, there's no black and brown coalition. Stop saying it. Cause they don't want a coalition. We need to stop being so freaking thirsty. You know, like, like, you know, begging somebody to be, oh, please, please have a coalition with me. Come on, black folks are fine by themselves. There's no coalition that we need, but the black coalition, that's it. That's all we need. That's enough for, for us. If we actually get that black coalition going, we'd be alright. You know, and also when it comes to my wife, because you know, I seen on the side note, I see these, these little security tribe, um, you know, raccoons running around here trying to post pictures or whatever. Um, I think they went to my wife's current Facebook page and, and, and post one, post up picture. I'm like, okay, I mean, sure, everybody know what my wife look like. Actually, that's a better picture you posted, actually, than the old one from twenty fourteen. She just had my baby, actually. Um, I remember years ago, my wife told me, because some people don't understand how I do things. She said, hey, you gotta fight for the black community. You gotta fight. You say, you gotta fight for our, you know, our kids. You say, if you don't fight for the community and fight against, you know, this, this racism, you're saying, these devils out here. You say, what about our kids? So yeah, you gotta fight. You gotta stand up. You gotta say something. So when it comes to my wife, she heavily supports what I do because it directly affects even my children. It affects your children. You understand what I'm saying? So definitely, definitely, you know, she, she's on board and like I said, she is actually, I'm gonna say I'm tame in my speech. She's a lot, she's more feisty in what she say and yeah, she, she would say something, she probably get in trouble, you know, so it's better for me to do it, right? But black folks get in control of that, get in control, get in control, get in control of this now. And like I said, they are not the biggest opponent. They're really not for, for us. We are battle tested. We have five hundred years of, of, of battle test, right? This is, that, this is light work, is not nothing that hard for black folks to nip in the bud, right? Just like I said, start economic boycotting them. Stop going to their restaurants, stop going to their businesses unless you know them personally. Now you know them personally? Okay, cool. That's no problem. But you know, so we talking about definitely in the LA area. Just start applying that pressure. That's all. Exposing their racism every chance you get, expose it. Those two things right there, you know, we all have your back online. We not gonna put up with no anti-black racism, because I don't want nobody to get away with it. And it don't matter. And notice, this is California, all these people had a Democrat in front of their name. And it don't matter and notice, this is California, all these people had a Democrat in front of their name. I want you to notice that. As you know, all the Republicans are racist. Everybody was a Democrat. But thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us on the podcast. Greatly appreciated. Make sure you click the subscribe button. That way you know when we post another podcast. Make sure you click the like button. That's very important. So you know, new people can come in and see the content. You know, we have, um, you know, the midterms coming up. And, and I want y'all to notice, you know, black folks, they want you to go vote for Democrat and this is your Democrat representation too. You understand? Karen Bass, she didn't come out really too strong against them. Maxine Waters, where was she at? They scared of them. And that's, that's despicable, that you scared of them. So despicable. But also thank you for people that's donated either through a super chat or, you know, anything else. We greatly appreciate it. So thanks for listening. We see you on the next one.